Again, thank you everyone for being here tonight. I'll just call the meeting to order. Counselor London?
Present.
Counselor Spivey?
Present.
Counselor Beard?
Here.
Counselor Wilson?
Present.
And myself, present. Thank you. And anyone want to move forward with your approval? I think you had some questions about the minutes from last week.
Yeah?
Okay.
Okay. I'll make a motion that the screening of the minutes be dispensed with since each member of the council and the mayor received a copy and that they be approved and submitted as for May the 21st, 2019.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Counselor Spivey?
Yes, sir. I'll make a motion for the approval of current bills for payment in the amount of one hundred twenty-seven thousand seventy-six dollars and sixty-two cents.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Okay. Any professional consultant reports? I don't believe so. Okay. Mayor?
We have one information item that I want to give you because we're fully talking about the audit here and talked about some of these other things that we... The road improvement plan that I told you last time we started on, completed what we have budgeted for this year. I can tell you that it is more expensive than what the plan indicated it was going to be, just in cost of materials. It was originally, Frank and I should probably let you this, originally it was eighteen and a half miles scheduled for this year.
Yes, sir.
The county had taken over, this was done before the land was developed, before we reached that agreement with the county to take over certain roads. So if you don't take one of those, this is just a detail of what I'm talking about. The roads are worse than, obviously, than what we hoped they would be, taking more material. There's the cracked ceiling that we were doing over this period of time. The public works spent approximately twelve thousand dollars on eighty-four hundred pounds of the ceiling, rented the equipment and did it themselves. Again, we save tons. I mean, most cities are just going to contract us out, but Public Works does a great job and figures out ways to do it so we can get more for less. You got what? You ended up really only out of that about four miles of roads, is that right?
Yes.
Four miles of roads. You can see which ones we did, what parts of those that we did. For example, once they started on Sixteenth Street, which is the very first one up there, they partially completed about a half a mile of one lane and saw that they were using much more material then, so rather than using it all on that street, they went to the neighborhoods and started doing some of those. And you can see the descriptions on those there. That's all I've got to really to say about that, is want to give you an update. This is all the detail of where they worked, what they did. We'll continue it next year, but just so you know, be prepared, it's going to take more material than what was...
Mayor, do you mind since we didn't get to discuss it in pre-council, you mentioned the agreement with the county that we'll be adding as a resolution tonight? That might be appropriate?
Yes. We'll be happy to do that.
Thank you.
This is an old project with a senior senator. It actually originated with our administration for the expansion that the county was wanting to do in partnership with the city. The previous council approved the plan at that time and the budget or the amount that was going to be required for the city's portion, which was twenty thousand dollars. I think at that time the project was fifty or sixty thousand, seventy thousand, something like that. It's changed a couple of times in terms of the cost. And I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you this, which is the letter that we just got this week, within the last week, from the county, which lays out the cost, which basically is saying if you want to do this project, the total cost they estimate it to be is eighty...
Eighty-eight thousand one hundred.
Eighty-eight thousand one hundred. And the city's portion of that would be thirty thousand six oh nine. You have a decision to make whether you want to continue with this project and allocate the thirty thousand six oh nine plus any overruns that go beyond that from this point forward, or whether you want to send it to the county things, but no things, we'll forego that. That's totally your decision in discretion at this point. They'll take your money and do something else. There is a letter and the big page there gives you the descrip... Oh, I'm sorry, I'm getting too much. So if you take one of the small pieces of paper or one of the big pieces of paper. The expansion is basically storage room. It's on the back of those classrooms, if you're familiar with the building up there. And it's about, I think Frank and them calculated, it was about eight hundred square feet of storage space. Again, your commitment would be on this agreement, we just have to give them an answer, thirty thousand six oh nine if you want to go forward with it. Their portion of contribution on this is seventy-seven, not seventy-seven.
Forty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-three?
Whatever, thirty thousand from the ADA. Fifty-seven thousand four ninety-one. Fifty-seven, four ninety-one. So that's their portion. They are managing this project. The city is not managing it, has not been managing it along the way. It's taken way longer than it should have to get to this point for whatever reason, but it is where it is and it is what it is. And it's your choice, but we do need to give them an answer, yes or no.
And we'll get into that discussion when we come. That will be an added resolution at tonight's meeting. So just wanted to get it on the table. And I don't believe, do either of our two department heads that are here, that we'd like to say anything else tonight, open forum right now? Okay?
They're smarter than that.
If not, we'll start now with Counselor London.
I'm sorry. I'm just sort of thinking about this project and what it's all about. It's been so long ago. Twenty thousand dollars. First of all, Jared, thank you. I just want to say thank you for okaying us for a week under the ground, if not on top of the crown. Really appreciate it. And that's all I'm going to say tonight. Thank you for shaking that up.
Just reminding everybody that the Beka Haba cleanup is going on this Saturday. There's a lot of organizations that are volunteering and I'll be down there, but if you're looking to get involved, you can go online to the, gosh, I cannot even think anymore tonight. I have to look at this. Friends of the Haba, who's, remind me that...
It's, you can go to Haba Cleanup.
Haba Cleanup, just go to Haba Cleanup and it'll take you to a volunteer page, right?
Right. And registration, if you're going to pick up on land...
Yeah.
As opposed to the canoes?
Right.
You go to the Albada Institute, you know, the...
Over at Hoover?
No, it's the Summit.
Summit, okay.
And register there and you get a T-shirt.
If I could add to that?
Yes, sir.
The city, we have committed to pick up any that they bring out at land in here. If they bring it to the top of the hill where we're able to park it.
Nice. So they're cleaning up fifty miles of river on land and in the water, so looking forward to having a good Saturday due to that. But I encourage you, if you're interested, please go online and check it out.
And the canoes are already filled.
Nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I just want to ask the mayor questions, just talking about the roads here. Fire came through and tore up Georgia Road, hard to Sixteenth Street and rough the road. Is there any way we can get them to repave, resurface what's in Irondale?
Rough the road is not Irondale. It's for our road responsibility, it's county and Birmingham.
Right.
And so my assumption is, and I talked to a fire representative last week, that they will ultimately get that done when they finish that work. They patched, and the first time I went on it after they patched, it was horrible. I think they come back, somebody told me that it was better.
They have come back and redone it.
I haven't been on it since. I gave up after that one time.
Yeah.
I came here that late tonight and it is terrible.
Yeah. So that is my understanding is, is when that work is done, they will do a better job of repairing the road. And I don't know about any in Irondale that they've not done. Do you find...
Just the small section of Georgia Road, just a few feet there. And I think they've actually did a pretty good job in that part of it. Right-hand angle now.
No. Well, I do have some, but it's going to come later.
Oh, okay.
And I'll defer mine tonight, which saved the time. Cindy, you're here tonight, do you mind making a quick update on CDA? We have not had any more resumes, by the way, for the Beka position. We've only had one. That will go to the CDA on the eighteenth for their consideration. They may be coming back to us to ask us for a little more time to see if they can get in more, but we'll see after they interview the candidate. And they'll pass on a recommendation if they feel that candidate's fine. But go ahead, everything else that's going on?
There are, we've got a couple of things where we're doing some possible work with, where we've got analysis going on of various properties that we hope. Irondale, as far as look, we're not, it's not, we're not really sure if we're going to be doing this because it depends on the expense, how much it's going to cost to clean it up and so on. So, but we are working on trying to get this property where it can look a whole lot better than what it currently is, but I can't really go into more detail than that. But we are working with that. We're working with retail specialists. There are several investors that are interested in looking at opportunity zones in Irondale. There are quite a few opportunity zones in Irondale, and there's a lot of interest. I'm not, a retail specialist is not at liberty to discuss those business investors right now, but when that time comes, we'll certainly keep everyone updated on that. But we're really excited about what's going on. Retail specialist was representing Irondale over at the Recon in Nevada and talking with various retailers there, real estate brokers. And so we're looking forward to having a report back from them when we meet as a board on the eighteenth of June.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
One question. Are you, see, different properties in Irondale. Are you utilizing your comprehensive plan to look at those properties, which you're talking about?
Right. We've been working with Sane, the engineer from Sane. They're looking at various plots, properties and so on, and seeing whether any of this would be feasible, whether it would be workable. And we're still working with them on that. And that's why I'm saying that we really can't talk about anything right now because there's nothing really concrete. We're looking at things, seeing if things are workable, and if we do find some things, we'll certainly let everyone know, let the city council know which ones are the ones that are workable and will be really good for Irondale.
Thank you so much.
Do we have any representative from Irondale with retail specialists in Nevada?
Yes, we do. Our chairman's involved with them and...
Did we have any representative that will with them?
Oh, at Recon? No. No.
At this point, I make a motion to relieve regular council meeting and go into public hearing. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Notice is hereby given that at its regular public meeting beginning at six thirty PM on June fourth, two thousand nineteen, in Irondale City Council Chambers, located at one-on-one Twentieth Street South, Irondale, Alabama, in Jefferson County, Alabama. The city council of the city of Irondale will hear comments from interested citizens concerning the vacation of a portion of Seventeenth Street Abbey. And that was what we discussed in pre-council. And at first, anybody here to speak in favor of that?
I'm the architect for that project, so I don't know.
Do we have any... We'll ask questions. That'd be fine if we have questions, we'll ask. All right. Thank you so much. And do we have anybody here to speak against that vacation of property? Okay.
I'll make a motion to relieve...
Do you have a question? Because I'm asking a question change up in pre-council about what exactly you're going to do with that project? I think they came up early.
I asked that question.
Since you're the architect, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, they want to expand. There's a little bit of parking right there on that side of the school. And so Irondale Community School, Jefferson County Schools, they want to expand that parking to give them more staff parking because they're kind of lacking, just because they're kind of landlocked with the roads around it. So that's, that's the intent, is to build an additional parking lot here out there.
All right. Any additional questions? If not, you have a motion on the floor, Counselor Beard?
I'd like motion to relieve public hearing, we're here in regular council meeting.
Second. Okay. Mr. Wilson? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. And at this point, do we have any...
I think we skipped one of the professional consultants, but we have an auditorium to present, so if you could...
He could if he'd like. We'd go and do it at this point?
Yeah.
That'd be great.
We could do that.
Okay. Please, if you don't mind?
Hi, Doc.
We were saying the best class, but we didn't like.
I understand anticipation is really about, how about numbers? Anyway, I'm David Cork and with Cork Hill Company, and we did the audit for, on the city of Irondale this year. The city received unqualified opinion, which good opinion, unqualified in our verbiage, that means there were no qualifications. It took the opinion, which what we called a clean opinion. And so that's, means everything is within norms, within the accounting. And speaking of the accounting, I just want to say that the accounting has gotten better year by year, since James has been here. He's doing, he's doing a, he's doing a good job getting it in on it. Cities report on two different bases of accounting. They report on the modified accrual basis, which is on a funds basis, and each individual fund. And when we give an opinion, we cover each individual fund on the modified accrual basis. It also reports on the full accrual basis, which is called entity-wide. And that's what I'm going to talk about. The modified accrual, the funds basis is more of a short-term view, is try to let you know what you have to make to build it, kind of, in actual life. The full accrual basis is basically what for-profit advisers report on. And so if you have a copy of the board, want to look, whatever, it's on page twelve, the balance sheet is. The only thing interesting or neat, I guess, on the asset side of the balance sheet is the count receivable other, which is I think the last item on the assets. And that's a receivable from benchmark of the two million dollars that was advanced to them some several years ago. It's being repaid through sales tax. During two thousand eighteen, the city and Water combined reduced bonded indebtedness and capitalized leases by three point one million dollars. Didn't borrow any money, but paid off three point one million dollars. There's a detail of that on page thirty-six of the report. Also included in liabilities is net pension liability of nine point nine million dollars, which is compared to nine point one in two thousand seventeen. And when I say net, that is the gross liability of your share of the pension, what the state of Alabama does, and this is not what all states do, but the state of Alabama, Irondale is treated as a separate entity in the pension plan. The Jefferson County school system, the county, are each separate entities. And so when we come about your, your net pension liability, that is the city of Irondale's net pension liability. Some states aggregate all of the, all of the thing, and you get a share of it based on your payroll. But this is Irondale's share.
What page is that on?
There's, you're talking about pension liability? It's on page twelve. The number is down in the nonpart liabilities, second item to the net pension liability. There's about seven pages of footnotes about pension liability. Did you try it?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. So that liability increased eight hundred thousand dollars this year. And that eight hundred thousand dollar increase is after you guys, the city, had paid in seven hundred eighty-five thousand dollars into the plan, and the employees had paid in an additional four hundred forty-seven thousand. So about a million, if my math is right, was paid into the plan and your liability's still up. I mean, it's a, it's an ever-increasing number. The next number down is a net OPEB liability, and that's other post-employment benefits for those that don't know what OPEB stands for. And it was about a million dollars this year. That's a net number two. And it's compared to about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars last year. So it put up something. And that's, that's, of course, the insurance benefits that you provide to your retired employees until they just go on Medicare, or Medicaid, whatever Medicare is. The city of Irondale, they've got seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars set aside for OPEB benefits. So you did not have that. When I say the net liability, the million dollars, it'd been about a million eight you're going to have. I mean, because it's seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars that you have on deposit offsets that, offsets the gross liability and brings it down to a million, million dollars. Irondale is just really doing a good job of funding it compared to nationwide. Less than five percent of the pensions that have OPEB plans put any money aside for. That's nationwide, less than five percent. So you guys are doing a good job of funding it. I'm going to move to the expenses of the revenue. Revenue, the city expenditures this year by about four hundred thousand dollars, if you don't take into account transfers, which are just money between funds. Last year, it was a deficit of six hundred fifty-five thousand dollars, so you have included your situation by name, but your expenditures are down this year, but in hearing eighteen, about one point three million. And if Frank had his play, it wouldn't look like it's going to be down.
Say into that bottom line.
And water net income was pretty consistent between the two years, about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And I'm counting on that going up some with the increase in revenue. That is, that was great use of that.
Take about the water net income again?
It's about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, both seventy and eighty, so it's pretty consistent. And the last two years...
That had something to do with the RSC though, doesn't it? Did we implement a RSC that...
Radio, the radio made, rate measures?
Yeah. No. Rate stabilization, stabilization, where we kind of...
Yeah. Yeah. You were talking about several years ago when you...
That's right.
Yes.
Money management increases here?
Yes.
Yeah, but you said that, but that has not been implemented at all.
Yes. Yes, that has been implemented.
I'm telling you, it has not been implemented.
It was, it was implemented for three years, but for the last two years, which David is talking about, we had an increase in the water department, the rates have not changed.
Right. From that time. That's, that's what rate stabilization is. If it, if it doesn't...
Right.
If it's stable, then...
No. No. The rate stabilization plan was a plan that was put in place to help the water department to break even over a ten-year period. And we started out where we increased the rates the first three years, which was in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. But we haven't had a water rate increase since twenty sixteen. Therefore, the rate stabilization plan has not had an effect on the additional revenue that we currently have in the water department because we have not raised the rate over the last two years.
Well, it's the water department...
But that was put in place to...
Derek, you're not looking at...
That was put in place to do that, though.
Right.
That's why, that's why we created, but it was in effect during that time to put us in a position where we are now, because if the RSC would have been put in place, we wouldn't have had the...
No, you wouldn't. And...
The name. That's all I'm saying.
We had a council member back from the other council that talked about how we didn't need to make money in the water, and I disagree. Because you've got to improve. I mean, you're providing a service. You've got ice that you've got to put in the ground, you've got a foot that you've got to buy. You've got all this sort of stuff that you've got to, you've got to make up.
Now, my question is, are we, are we as positive in black this year or in the red?
Talking about, when you're talking about this year...
Talking about through income versus outcome.
Well, the year two thousand eighteen, you're positive.
Okay. Yeah. Is that that four hundred and forty-six thousand?
Those four hundred thousand?
Water department?
You said revenue exceeded expenditures by four hundred thousand. I think you said revenue exceeded expenditures by four hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah. That's what I was asking, that four hundred and forty-six thousand you got for the report.
That's, that's not water.
That's not the water.
Okay. That's not water.
I'm, that's the water department right there.
Water's a hundred and seventy. You said something about a hundred and seventy.
Hundred and seventy-six?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I see what you, I see. Before you take off that two sixty-nine. I got you.
And so that's, that's really about all I have, except that I want to compliment this mayor and this council for the good job that they have done over the last, actually the last couple of years. Because you've gone through some bad times with Sam's closing down and everything, and you should come out of it. And I can't remember the last time both the city and the water had revenues that exceeded expenditures. All I can say is good job.
Thank you.
Well, I think you had said last year that for the previous seven or something, the deficit except for borrowing money.
Yeah. I didn't go back and check them, but yeah, it was a number of, most of the time it was a, other than borrowing money, it was a deficit. And you scout, continue, obviously, but you got to, you got to...
And I'll commend the council for making tough decisions on reducing expenditures. The staff has done a great job. I mean, we still have to keep up with capital improvements and service improvements, but I, I will say that we are positioned, that we will stay the course and move forward. We are positioned to be in really good shape going forward.
How much do we have in reserve fund now?
Currently?
Yes.
About three point nine million.
Really?
So the things that we have done, and I say we collectively have done over the last two years, have made a marked difference. Because we, if you remember the first year, we weathered some pretty, pretty strong storms. And took pretty tough decisions and tightening the belt. But having gone through all of that, we are better and we're stronger because then if we continue in that direction, the city has a bright future.
I agree. I think we've done, I mean, I, I just can't say anything other than just good job.
And we did it without firing anybody. I know they didn't buy it all time. We did it without firing any employees.
Mr. Cork, I guess those three little words apply, no maniflu platters?
No maniflu.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And let me, let me just say one thing without, without pouring any salt on the previous administration. They did, I'm saying they, we, we did what we could in order to make the city move forward. Okay? There's a lot of things that we're doing now that the previous council actually initiated. So whatever the case may be, we wouldn't be where we are without the previous administration. And it goes on and on and on. You know, each year gets better, true enough, or each administration gets better, we hope. But as far as the previous administration, they did just as good of a job as they could to. I say we. Thank you. I just wanted to put that out there.
I remember when I came on the council, the first year we had, we were left with a fifteen million dollar budget, and we neglected a little over eleven million dollars. We were working skin and bones that day, not in your...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you. Appreciate your patience.
No problem.
With that being said, I think if you tried to approve the agenda, Rob, you worded the three, or two additions, I believe, right?
Yes.
So I think I would put out there that we approved the agenda with the addition of the wording on number two, not to exceed three thousand dollars, correct? Counselor Spivey?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then the other two, Rob will defer...
Okay, and then the other two, Rob will defer for you for the wording on that, that's two oh one nine R twenty-two is first.
Twenty-two would be approved with a low bid of Empire Pipe in the amount of thirty-five thousand, three hundred, four dollars and forty cents.
That's twenty- I gotta type in that?
Yes, sir.
For the purchase of water meters.
Okay, and then the R twenty-three?
Twenty-three would be to approve a thirty thousand, six hundred and nine dollar match payable to Jefferson County for an eight hundred square foot championship at the senior center.
So wait, how long do we have to make decision over that?
Well, that was gonna come up because I have a couple of questions about it.
Well, right now, but we've got the resolution on the floor, let's get our agenda approved and we can do the discussions during the-
I'm making a motion with the-
Actually, hold on a second. On Frank's sign for seventy-five, Jenny, you need a hundred bucks for a new sign immediately, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll be two signs.
It'll be two signs?
We'll just give this one.
Okay, cool. All right, thank you. Then I'm good.
That's done, all right. With that being said, does everybody understand the agenda with the additions and the one championship, is it correct? Okay, do we have a motion to approve it?
I'm making a motion with those changes and additions that we approved in the budget.
Do I have a second on this?
Excuse me.
The agenda, okay. With that being said, do we have a second? I think, Council Wilson, do you second or?
No, I didn't, but I can second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, with that out of the way, do we have any comments from anyone in the audience on agenda items only? Agenda items only?
With exception to item number two in the bid, because it was public here.
Okay, if not, let's proceed into our unfinished business.
I'm making a motion that resolution twenty nineteen R fourteen be approved.
So that's approval of the audit for fiscal year 2018?
Yes.
All right, do I have a second on that motion? Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, motion carries. All right, Counsel Spivey?
Yes, sir, I make a motion that resolution twenty nineteen R nineteen provides funding for the Irondale Middle School robotics team in an amount not to exceed three thousand dollars.
Do I have a second on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries.
Got a second.
All right, excuse, and one, excuse me. I mentioned that earlier. Okay, now we move into new business?
I'm making a motion that twenty nineteen R twenty be approved.
And that's increasing the Public Works Department budget by seventy-five thousand. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All those in, excuse me. Treat it like an ordinance for appeal, so let's go through that process, please.
I'm making a motion that twenty nineteen R twenty be considered red.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
I'm making a motion that all rules that would prevent the immediate consideration and adoption of resolution twenty nineteen R twenty, uh, R twenty be suspended and unanimous consent be given for immediate consideration of said ordinance.
Counsel London?
Yes.
Counsel Spivey?
Yes.
Counsel Beer?
Yes.
Counsel Wilson?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
I'm making a motion that resolution twenty, R twenty nineteen, R twenty be either passed and adopted is introduced.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Appreciate that. We can go on to the one about the vacation of Seventeenth Street Alley, please.
I'm making a motion that resolution twenty nineteen R twenty-one be passed.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Okay, and now we're going to our first add-on, which is the water meter, which is twenty nineteen R twenty-two.
I'm making a motion that resolution twenty nineteen R twenty-two be approved.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Question.
Any discussion?
Um, I asked a question earlier as far as the bids coming in, hopefully that those bids can be open among the councils next time, anytime we have bids that come in like that, just so we can, we can kind of see who's, who's bidding on those because we have to vote on them and we want to see who's interested in doing visits in the city of Irondale. So I'm asking the counselors, I mean, you know, I think that's something that we, we do need to be a part of. That's, that's just my opinion, that's just what I think. If I'm voting on it, I want to know who, who's all involved.
Okay, please. With this last bid for these radio, radio meters, we only had one company to submit yesterday. So we opened the bids at two o'clock and we were through at two oh five because we only had, I mean, Jared had a lot of people to inquire about it, but at the end of the day, you only received one bid and that was from the company that you have before you tonight.
But I think if nothing else, we could inform council members when the bids are going to be open, if they would like to-
Yeah, because if, if we're coming, if, if, if we're being approached with something like this on the night of and not knowing that that was a bid in, in, in the process as far as, you know, hey, we're looking for someone to bid on some new meters that would be here in the city, you know, I, I just think we just need to know.
I think Mr. Stewart has a way to do that, so we'll, why don't we try that in the future? That'll work.
Yeah, I mean, if we can, if we start pre-council at six, we'll be through at six oh two if we just open a bid.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not a problem, I mean, go forward, we'll make sure.
We'll let you know when the bids are being opened and if you want to-
If we can do it during council.
If we do it during council, we don't have to-
Pre-council.
We'll let you know.
Or have to have a work session potentially, so we'll-
We'll, we'll let you know when the bids are being opened.
And make sure we're within the law of what we're doing.
Not, not when it's open, you can let, you know, it's being open at nine o'clock in the morning. That's not gonna do me any good.
I mean, when they're, when they are, we will give you the announcement of when they're going to be open. You can send an email saying, when the bid is at two o'clock or whatever.
Yeah, well, you know, what I was gonna say going forward, when, put an ad in the newspaper to bid something out, I'll make sure that I send you all a copy of the bid. So you'll have it and then you want to participate during the opening, the, the word of welcome to come, because the, the opening of the bid is open to the public, so it's, I mean, everybody's, is, wanted to have to come.
We, we, we're not talking about Phil, Phil here.
At this point, we have something on the table, but, uh-
A second.
For a second, we got a discussion that was part of that, that we know there's something we need to look at at some point, but right now, for the motion that's on the table, we need a vote, so call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, that motion carries and we can continue that if you'll get, Mr. Stewart?
I'll, I'll, we'll pick it up if they get it.
All right, if you don't find it, then the mayor-
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, and now we have our last mo, uh, resolution, which is the one concerning the matching funds to Jefferson County. Now, the risk here is, you, you asked earlier about how long do we have? The letter made it sound like they're ready to move forward.
Uh, it does sound like that. I, I want to say, I, I don't have a recommendation to you on this. Typically, I, most of the time I do have a recommendation, I feel strongly one way or the other. I don't on this, so, so it is surely your choice and simply your choice. You know, if you need storage space, that's probably a good value for, for what you get since they're paying two-thirds of it, you're paying one-third, but there are costs in there that, you know, but maybe if you're doing it yourself, you didn't have, so.
And, and remember, if we approve this tonight, we are approving a specific amount, if they run over, that already says in the letter, they'll be coming back to us, so this may not be the end of this hope. So there's something to consider, but it is a chance to get two-thirds of it paid.
Yeah, let me, let me make one comment real quick, since you're addressing everything tonight. First of all, I got a couple of concerns as far as this letter is concerned. This letter is dated May twenty-third. We just received this letter today, I did, I'm sorry, I don't mean to speak for everybody else. There are two names on this letter, one is yours and another one is someone that doesn't even make decisions for the city. So my concern is, since we're not keeping any secrets, since we're being transparent, why didn't I receive this letter a little bit earlier? I guess that's my-
I don't think it was addressed to you. I, I don't, I'm not looking at a copy of it, but, uh-
Which, which I stated earlier, there are only two names on here who it was emailed to.
Right.
So basically, you're asking me to vote on an issue where it's gonna cost additional funds for the city to approve to have the senior center renovated. I'm not finished, I'm not finished. So basically, my question is, why, why am I just receiving this today?
You were probably thinking about opening bids when I said, I don't remember.
Man, that's not, that's not answering the question. Let's stay on the issue, let's stay on the issue of this letter. We're not talking about bids, we're not talking about anything else but this. It's, it was dated, it dated May twenty-third, so why am I just receiving? That's the question.
I didn't have to give it to you at all, I gave you a copy of it.
Oh, you don't have to give it to me at all, I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt.
You didn't get a copy of it, I'm assuming because Dr. Hamilton didn't copy you on it, that's why I'm assuming you didn't get a copy. I can't speak for him, but that, that would be my guess. If your name is not on it, that's why he chose not to send it to you. He sent it to me. I'm passing it along to you so that you can make whatever decision you want to make.
Okay, the day of, like I said earlier, the day of.
You, you don't have to-
So you knew about this on May the twenty-third?
I knew, I'd like you, you know about it before I did because you were on the original council that approved the project.
Let's, let's stick to this letter. We're sticking to the letter, I'm just talking specifically about this letter dated May the twenty-third that I'm just receiving today. Let's talk about this letter. Why am I just receiving this? I don't know if any other councils have, have received it before today, but you're expecting the council, you're expecting me to make a decision today based on a letter that I just received.
I'm gonna say it for the time, I don't care what you do.
So is, is, is that being real transparent as, as a leader?
I don't care what you do.
As, as a leader, does that mean that you communicate effectively like you should?
You got enough airtime?
I'm just asking the question.
Well, at this point, I think the, the response back-
You know what?
But again, I'm not trying to respond back.
The mayor, the mayor has not said anything in response to the letter that we're just receiving today, that he received on the twenty-third and another individual-
Well, it's dated the twenty-third, that doesn't mean you received it on the twenty-third.
And another individual doesn't make any decisions for the city, that's only-
Let me figure this one, you will never get another letter from me that your name's not on. How about that?
Can I ask one question?
That's, that's, that's a real D coming from a, a leader, supposedly leader of the city, you know that, right?
Just go nip it in the bud.
Yeah.
Can I ask one question? Is this storage for the senior center or is this for Jefferson County to put stuff in there? So this will benefit this, this senior center?
Let me say, originally, they, they have storage in the basement.
Right.
And they-
Fair enough.
They originally wanted some storage upstairs so they could have quick access, not have it all around, they'll downstairs, open the garage door, hold everything back.
Yeah, it's a steep one, it's a steep one.
And at that time, I, I see the need, but in the past year, I've been taken off the road where I don't have free access to go visit him on any time like I did in the past, so I haven't had any communication about this myself and, uh-
So do y'all have any other information about this?
It's my turn to talk, I'll do. I think that we need to get the director of the senior center in here and explain-
You, you did what, how's the director?
Five hundred thousand dollars is, is, why this addition is needed at this time before we spend the-
I'm happy for her, I'm happy for her to answer that question. Again, like most of us here, with exception of three of you, we were not in on the original plan that, she was not in on the original plan and I don't think she feels strongly on either of them.
Yeah, it was, it was, uh, the previous admin, uh, director that requested.
Twenty, twenty thousand had been previously approved.
Yeah, and that was about the-
But we didn't, we didn't accrue that or put it in a reserve account, so it's coming back as the full amount with an additional ten thousand because of price costs.
That's why I say we need to get to current director and see that, how badly it's needed to be.
And, and I guess if we would have known ahead of time, then we could have made some kind of, some kind of bid bits or something, we could have asked somebody to come, we could have made some phone calls if our leader would have passed his information along, he got it.
Very easy thing, Terry, it's uncomfortable for, for you is if you're uncomfortable with it or uncomfortable with, is there, there's no obligation on your part, the way I read it at least, there's no obligation on your part to go forward. I think what will happen is if you decide not, you know, that this is not what you want to do, the county will just take and reallocate those funds to some other projects somewhere else. It's not our, if they want to-
Or put it on table for the next meeting, people uncomfortable.
And ask the director to come in and explain, you know, let us know if it's, it's something they really need to know.
At this point, it's on the agenda, so that would mean at the time the motion is made, it'll be tabled.
I'm, I'm making a motion. I'm making a motion.
Well, I, I, no, I got, I got another question. I have another question. So are you telling me anything, and this, this question is directed to our mayor, but you're telling me any other information that comes in from the city, so you're not gonna pass it along to Council Wilson? Is that what you're saying? Did I hear you say that?
No, I said any.
Did, did I hear you say that?
Would you listen?
That was a question.
Would, do you want me to answer or respond? That was a question. Okay, next.
I'm, I'm waiting. He, he had an answer, because I wanted on record if he's gonna pass along the information, like he said, like he said he was.
What do you need to say?
Hey, is this coming back?
I'm done with him too.
Okay, all right, thank you. So at this point, can we move forward with a motion on this particular?
I make a, I make a motion that resolution twenty nineteen R twenty-three be tabled to the next council meeting.
Same.
And that we, and that the director of the senior center be asked to, to attend and, and discuss this.
And Mr. Hamilton, or if anyone in the council could come and, uh, explain some things to us, or we can make a phone call.
Hamilton is needed, it's just if, if we need, if the-